Before I call the meeting in order, it will indicate as President of the Library Board that I've determined that an in-person meeting in the body is not practical or prudent because of the statewide COVID-19 epidemic. This meeting has been recorded in compliance with state law. Ask the Secretary to call the roll, please.
Barbara?
Here.
Susan? Roland?
Here.
Julian?
Here.
Phillip?
Here.
Joyce?
Here.
Chastity?
Here.
Don?
Here.
Harriet?
Yes.
Okay, let me call him, hang on one second.
Hi Susan.
Hi Susan.
Hello everyone.
Just go roll, we have a quorum. In this environment, participants may indicate questions. Pardon? In the way that our environment, any guests may... We're having some problem, I don't know what feedback we're getting.
We are... It might be good for everybody to mute themselves. And I'm having trouble getting Gwen in, hold on.
Well, it's still spinning. Hang on, it's calling better. Let me try that another way, let me do it.
Can still hear someone. Harriet, is there someone at your house?
Yes.
Okay. Do you know how to mute yourself while you're not talking? It's in the lower left portion of your screen. You hover.
I got it, okay.
Okay. And I'm having to...
If any member of the public is attending the meeting virtually, they can type in questions or use by hand raising a function, we can deal with that. There is no president's report to have today, so that brings us to the secretary's report and the consideration of the April 12, 2020 minutes. Any corrections?
Did you say April 12?
When I say April, I might want to said that, that wouldn't be right, August 12, 2020, thank you.
Okay.
Are there any corrections to the minutes as distributed?
Well, there's one little thing. On, under the paragraph "other," it's toward the end. It's the second full sentence, it says banning has been a last resort when negating and reminding fail. I didn't know if you meant negotiating.
Okay.
You, negating, I think you can use it, but that's when you just say it's... It could be...
It's probably negotiating.
Okay.
Other than that correction, are there any other corrections to be made? If not, I have a motion to approve the minutes of the August meeting as well as the policy, as the Cardinal Public Library Emergency Policy Committee minutes of August 17.
I'm in approval.
I'll second. Susan seconded.
Don, the emergency meeting still shows me listed as secretary, but I wasn't there, does that matter?
I wondered about that, but...
And we're talking about August 12, not August 17.
Right.
Correct.
We need to correct the date from August 17 to August 12, is there? And we need to correct Roland's misdesignation, anything else to be corrected in that?
August 17th is a separate meeting.
Yeah, that's, I, I said August 12th because Don said August 8, August 17th, and we're not talking about August 17th yet. So I just wanted to make sure we were, the motion was for August 12th.
I thought it was for both.
No, we haven't discussed the committee meeting yet.
Why don't we just do this again? Just, let's have a motion to approve the, the August board meeting minutes by itself. And I'll declare the previous motion withdrawn, if that's agreeable.
Yeah.
With the corrections raised by Harriet, are there any other objection, any other corrections? If not, is there a motion to approve the August board meeting minutes?
I so need it.
Moved by Barbara, seconded by Susan, is that right?
Correct.
Any discussion? All those in favor, you have to have the roll call load, I'm sorry.
Barbara?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Me, yes. Julian?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
Joyce? Joyce?
Sorry, yes.
Chastity?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Harriet?
Yes.
Motion carries. Is there a motion to deal with the minutes of the policy committee meeting of August 12? Let's see. August 12, the first one is.
Is that the one I would take my name off?
Think so.
Those minutes are actually listed under the committee report. Approval of the minutes for the Emergency Policy Committee.
You want to pass them until we get the committee reports then, is that your preference? Okay, but that's what we'll do. That brings us to correspondence.
There are not, there is no correspondence.
You have information on their financial report and bills payable? Any questions?
Let me bring Gwen in here because she seems to be having some technical difficulty, okay? I'll be right back.
I have a microphone.
These are headphones, so, I mean, let's frame it.
I really haven't much to say, so I don't know what we should do. Yeah, I'll bring mine from home next time, just in case.
Oh yeah.
Oh, okay, yeah. This wasn't paired because I don't look in the past.
Yeah, I don't know why it's not...
Yeah, it's just saying like, we haven't started, but I can see you guys, so.
Yeah. Patrons trying to get in. Alright, sorry, these are slimy.
Waiting on me?
Yes. Okay.
Sorry.
Hello? Hi, sorry. Had a little difficulty. Let's see, for the bills to be paid, they're pretty standard bills, and then on the financial reports, we did get another distribution of the replacement tax, the third one of about $5,000, and that's all we received so far. Does anybody have any questions though?
Is there a motion to pay the bills?
So moved.
Anyone? Let's show, I seconded it. Any discussion? Roll call.
Barbara?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Me, yes. Julian?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
Joyce?
Yes.
Chastity?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Harriet?
Yes.
Can you hear me now? I'm sure, if I said yes, can you hear me?
We hear you.
Yeah. Okay.
Motion carries. Are there discussions about payroll tax deferral option?
What are we doing about that?
We contacted the city and they're not doing it because it's, the Treasury Department released basically advising that employers have the option because say if a employee quit halfway through, ultimately, we would be responsible for the liability because it's just pausing withholding and then you have to double withhold between January and March. And so after contacting the city, we decided not to give employees the option to do so.
Good choice.
You have a financial report in your packet. Is there any comment or question or motion on that regard?
I move to accept it from the history board.
I second.
Any discussion?
Question?
Yes.
Item 232 is the brush water. Seems like unusual amount, was there a problem there?
Yes, we were leaving a hose out for the people that water the Japanese garden, and Josh found it on one day, he's not sure how long it was on, so we think possibly kids or somebody in the neighborhood turned it on and left it on, so we've now installed the lock and key and then, so they have to come get it out of the library when they want to water. So, that should be prevented in the future.
Any other discussion? Roll call.
Barbara?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Me, yes. Julian?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
Joyce?
Yes.
Chastity?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Harriet?
Yes.
Motion carries. That would bring us to Gwen, I thank you for your work.
Alright, thanks. I'm going to pause for a minute and give this back to Diana, but bye.
Thank you.
I just want to spray these down. Yeah, I'll just get one next time, I'm sorry.
It worked for a while.
Yeah, it worked every time, so it's a big deal. Felt kind of weird to turn on the headset before wearing a mask. Alright, well, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Before Diana speaks to us, I think we should all note that she and Gwen were both wearing masks. They were in contact, in contact with each other, and they did disinfect the microphone after each time. So now I'll go turn it here to Diana.
Thank you. I, I just want to make a note, since I'm taking your minutes and I was not able to hear, who made the motions on bill approval and on the financial report? Can you tell me who made the motions in seconds?
I think Julian made the motion to pay the bills and I seconded, if I'm not mistaken. I'm not sure about the financial reports.
I made a motion to approve the financial report, Don.
That's the one, that's the one I seconded. Who did the report, the motion on, on the payable bill? Was that, I'm not sure, who did that?
I was in on part of it, either the motion or second.
Believe I was also.
There you go, I think it was Barbara made the motion and Roland seconded, at least we'll put it that way.
We'll check the recording later.
If there's any error, it'll be my fault.
Diana's muted.
Yikes, okay, accidentally hit a spacebar, muted myself, two computers. I assume that you are okay with the payroll tax option not offering that to, to employees as Gwen explained it, and you got your questions answered about that?
Yes.
Okay. Alright then. That brings us to building and grounds maintenance. You already heard about the water bill. And the, the issue we had the other day was a, we had to close for a day because of the, a clog in the sink, in the kitchen sink, so it wasn't a flood or anything like that, no actual sewage released into the building, but sewage gas while we were clearing the lines. And so we had to call a plumber and have them work on that for us for a couple of hours. But really, they got it taken care of, they just, we just needed an induc, more industrial snake than what we own, and so it's taken care of, but it was really disgusting. It's, well, there's no way we could have stayed open that day, but surprisingly, the smell was all gone the next day. So we have a good ventilation system, apparently, and a good, a good exhaust through our bathrooms because that's how we got it out of here, was just to blow it into the bathrooms and let the exhaust fans take it out. So, and so I guess that was a good test, which is a good thing in a time of COVID when you definitely want to have good HVAC systems, so that was an opportunity. There's been, Josh has done a little bit more kind of painting and sprucing up, so things are looking pretty good around here. Let's see. The other thing that we need to discuss is election day and whether or not we want to, whether or not we want to close. So I'm told, you know, you may have heard that there is a law passed in Illinois making election day a holiday, which, and saying that public, public entities like government buildings are supposed to be closed on that holiday in order to encourage voting. But we got clarification from the state library that it's optional whether or not we want to be closed. We do have a couple of employees, at least one possibly two, who want to work the polls on election day. And so it's, it's kind of up to you, I mean, I think you could do one or three things, you could just, I've always told our employees that they can go vote on, during work time, so they can just go, I'm going to go vote, and I'll come back, and they don't have to clock out. We could, we could just remain open and keep doing that, we could close, or we could remain open and offer employees, if they provide us proof that they are working on, on the election in some capacity, then they can have that day off and paid. That would be another option to do that as well. So what are your thoughts?
I don't see any reason to close as long as employees are free to go vote.
I agree with that.
I'm sure I understand why we would let people off work to vote and then pay them in addition if they're working as, as election judges. Can you explain to them why that would, why we'd do that?
Well, it would be because normally working for a public body, you would, if we were closed, they would be off, and then that would make them free to be able to go ahead and be an election judge without having to take a vacation day. So my thought was that we could say that if you provide us with some proof that you are actually working as an election judge, then we will not comp you essentially for that day, you don't have to take a vacation day, we would just pay you as though you were here. So it would be sort of an exemption for people who are doing that work, so that they could, could do that, because that is an all-day endeavor, and so they wouldn't be able, they're going to have to make a choice between, you know, working or doing that and, you know, taking one of their, one of their vacation days, so.
Are these salaried or hourly employees that are doing this?
The two people who've expressed interest in that to me are both salaried employees. But if we offered it, of course, you'd have to offer it to all of our employees, so there could be part timers that I'm not aware of who are wanting to do that.
What's pleasure of the board?
No, that sounds, sounds reasonable to me. I mean, it's, it's a little convoluted, but I understand Diana's reasoning, so I'm, I'm okay with that.
I think we probably ought to have a motion on this, I think, just so the record's going to reflect whatever people are voting or expressing, so can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I'll second.
So the motion is to have the library open on election day and to allow staff to vote without clocking out, and staff that choose to serve as, as, as election judges to be paid for the time that they would otherwise be, be working in the library, is that the motion, Phil?
That, that sounds right to me.
Discussion.
That could lead to a number of people choosing to be election judges and in essence...
I cannot believe that, I really can't.
You can't?
No, I mean, I was an election judge for many years, I don't think this is going to be attractive to a lot of people, so I don't, I don't think you run that risk. Maybe I'm wrong, but I don't, I don't think so.
Okay. If they did, it could be a double dipping kind of thing, but that's fine.
Yeah. Of course, the situation this year is so different from, I hope, every other year, when the, most people are going to vote by mail or early voting, and you won't have the big crowds that, I mean, for the presidential election, but that may change. And, and also, you know, I don't think you'll have big crowds because people are afraid.
I wonder if there should be some sort of deadline to declare your intentions so that Diana can plan accordingly, and, you know, if we, if we have a run of employee that suddenly decide to go work the polls, then we might want to know about that ahead of time, so maybe a...
You can't suddenly decide to do it, you have to be trained first.
Yeah, yeah, but, so maybe 30 days out, they, you need to know what they're, they're intending to do.
People should know by then, yes. Diana, you're muted again.
Um, thanks. Even if...
I'm an election judge each year, and I decided on my wife's advice not to do it this year. They'll be looking for young people.
Even if a staff person were to tell me like a week in advance, that would be enough time for us to get them, to make sure that their shift was covered. But yeah, as you said, they, they're going to have to go through some training, so I'll just let them know that they have, that they need to let us know as soon as possible, and certainly know later than, than the week before, but if they're going to go through that training, then they, they'll know further in advance than that. Does that work for you guys?
Yeah, that seems reasonable.
Yeah.
I think that you could work with your staff, the real question is, are we going to approve this motion? It's been moved and seconded, is there any other discussion? Could we have a roll call?
Barbara?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Me, yes. Julian?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
Joyce?
Yes.
Chastity?
Yes.
No.
Harriet?
Yes.
Motion carries. See where we are here. Need to talk about the per capita at this point. Is that where we are, Diana?
Yes.
As you all know, you received electronically this multi-chaptered first year from the library, State Library Association, and we're going to discuss chapters one through four. How do you, how do we go about doing this, Diana?
Yeah, that's, that's a great question. It's, it's a bit unprecedented for the state library to give this big of a workload and without much notice at all. I, but I think that's because of the COVID-19 situation, they have a whole lot of other things on their plate, and so this is what they went with, and the person who usually sets these per capita grant requirements, I believe, has retired and not been replaced. So, reading, if you've read through chapters one through four, I think we can do kind of what we normally do and just point out and discuss anything that you think we do well, or anything that you think we need to attend to in those four chapters, so.
I did notice something that I think we've probably not been very good at, which is having a orientation program for new board members. And Chastity, you're the most recently joined board member, did we give you any help of that?
Oh, I mean, not ahead of time, but I would say, it's not hard to learn though, you know, you just jump in and kind of learn from you guys. Maybe, you know, maybe 30, an hour, just kind of explaining, you know, like what a motion is, what a second is, you'll be on a committee, you know, like this is what we do, maybe like give an example of a, of board packet. I mean, you could say that, I agree with you.
Diana, do we need to help you with that, or can you handle that in the future?
I think I can handle that in the future, that's really good to hear, like what would be helpful. And there's just, it's one of those things that there, I've not ever really come across something that's sort of a good canned model, like here, this is, would be a good thing to hand to board members. I mean, I could hand you the book that you have to read this year, but that's a lot of reading, so I think, yeah, just a sample board packet, discussion of maybe Robert's Rules of Order, and committees.
I think that would be good, and I would suggest that we provide board, new board members copies with the Illinois Library, Illinois statute on libraries, because indeed all of us are operating under that, and I don't imagine we're all as familiar with that as we should be.
Yeah. When I know what...
Comments about governance, which is the second chapter?
I think we do most of those things, I know, do we actually have, the board members have trustee membership in those, in the Illinois Library Association?
I have not ever registered you for personal memberships in the Illinois Library Association, but I certainly could. It's about $100 a year, I believe, so that's certainly something that, that we could, that we could go ahead and do. You would get the ILA reporter.
Oh, I don't think, I just, it was on this list, and I went, you know, and, and I'm assuming we're all bonded.
You are all bonded, absolutely. You are all bonded, absolutely, required by law. All the staff are too. We have all of the proper insurance and everything like that.
Last item on this checklist, Diana says that we have a written succession plan focused on internal and external talent development to fill anticipated needs for library leadership and other key personnel. I have no idea if we have that.
Um, not exactly, like not as that is written. We, we have, I feel like to some extent that might apply to larger libraries. You have a lot of librarians under you who you're trying to maneuver upward. If I were set on retirement, that's something I would probably focus on would be looking at which of our librarians might be interested in doing my job and mentoring them into that potential role. That's not something I've ever noticed before. So I think that might be new to the statutes. And I, and I'm not entirely sure how to, how to interpret what it is that they're suggesting we do. We do have, you know, job descriptions for each person who works here. It's, it could be perceived potentially as like a red bus manual, like, you know, this is how you do my job if I die. But I'm not sure the way that's worded, that that reads quite like that.
Yeah, I don't think that's the direction of it. I think it's supposed to be that we have a plan for promoting people internally and finding other people to come and become library employees, neither of which do I think we're the size that's practical. But I did see it on there and I wanted to ask you about it.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't, I don't see that as being, I mean, we, you know, we do provide our employees with a little bit of reimbursement for, for taking classes, you know, to prepare them for, for being more qualified. So we do send them to conferences and, you know, do everything we can to empower them in their careers. And we've had employees go on to be directors of other libraries.
But we don't, we don't need a plan of succession or anything like that.
Diana, do you do those annual evaluations and are those recorded? Do you?
I actually have not taken that approach. And I've been at a lot of, you know, a lot of conference discussions about this. I meet with my employees, each of them individually regularly, in a, but in a more casual basis. I, myself and a lot of other directors have said the same thing, which is that when you sit down for an evaluation and you, you know, have this set of standards where you say you're doing good at this and bad at that, that it is terrible for employee morale. And I, so I really, I have avoided that and I have always been on the lookout for something else to do annually that's fair, that's more regimented and specific, but that is not so defeating to the employee. People get nervous about it. They have a lot of anxiety about it. They talk to other people about it. It just, I feel like in every environment that I've been in where that is a regular case and in every, you know, in talking with other directors, that it's just really not good for morale, just creates a problem. But I don't know, what are your thoughts on that? If you think it should be done, I can, can do it and say, the board says I have to do this.
Oh, no, it's just that it's, these are all.
It's written there.
And some of them are large libraries and the space thing for small libraries, they can't possibly do all those things.
Right.
Going through this, I think you do everything on these lists.
Oh, yeah. I think you're wise not to use that formal evaluation plan because it, so much of it, as Barbara says, doesn't apply and it's, it just gets, it just doesn't fit the situation. So I mean, I'm sure if you saw some, something that was awry, you'd warn or discuss it with the person and if there was no improvement and, you know, but I don't know. And I, I think libraries had a good record as far as employees not being let go because of violation of standards. It's working.
I do think as a lawyer, it's very important, if you're having an employee who is not performing to your expectations, that that employee is given fair notice of the, in what ways the performance was deficient or inadequate. So in that sense, I don't think it's important for you to have an annual review with each employee saying, this is what you did great or what you did wrong. But if you have somebody whose performance is excellent, I assume you're already praising them. But for those performances that are less than what you expect, and you should do this yourself, while they're not necessarily, you communicate with them. But if you have any employee whose performance is less than what you think is up to expectations, I think it's only fair to tell that employee the concerns that you have. I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but as a matter of morale, that's one thing. But an employee who ultimately gets surprised by the fact that, hey, I, nobody told me I wasn't living up to what was expected of me, that's not a fair notice to them after the fact.
And I assume it needs to be documented if it comes to some major disagreement.
If you had a conference with an employee that, where you said, you're meeting with Don and you say, Don, your attendance is lousy. You're not coming to work. You're coming in late and these kinds of things. That would be documented, I would think, to say, shape up or ship out. And I think it's important for the employee to know if there is such a problem. Now, I appreciate the fact that, as Harriet said, we've had very little turnover. I can think of a few times that we've had any problem with someone's performance and we don't want to go into those at this point. But having said that, I think it's only fair to tell an employee if something is less than what you think they should be doing. So I think, I would say that the library director can only meet, meet with people that need, need direction. But I think if there is a meeting, that ought to be documented as suggested by Roland.
I agree.
Yep, okay.
Anything else on personnel? Anybody wants to? We do comply with state law and federal law and all the rest of this. I think that's something we're all pretty sensitive to. I don't see anything really there. Does anybody have comments as was suggested by Barbara? We, we do have access to the building. As, as far as we know, it's still compliant with Illinois and ADA requirements for access. Any other comments about the, the building itself in terms of access?
I think we're, of all the, of the four chapters, I think that's the one we can, we can pretty, rest pretty safely on that. We do such a good job in just about every respect.
I just have one question, which probably can't be answered. But on page 13, number seven, the first line makes little sense when it says we should provide either access, but there's never a or. I don't know what they mean there. Just something to note, not for us to answer.
You know what? We should stick Harriet on them.
That's right.
Any other comments about this? I believe we've satisfied chapters one through four. Diana, if you're satisfied?
That's fine. Thank you.
Okay. Here. Committee reports, you have the minutes of the emergency policy committee meeting. Any comments about that? Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Yes, so moved. Second.
Seconded. Any discussion? I would say that when we met, we had a pretty good discussion and I was surprised at how much consensus there was really among the committee about this. Would you agree?
Yes, and it went very quickly.
All those in favor, please, or excuse me, we need a roll call vote. We need to keep, keep me up to speed. I want to take votes. We can't do them except by roll call, so.
Barbara?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Me, yes. Julian?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Joyce?
Yes.
Chastity?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Harriet?
Yes.
Any unfinished business?
Good, good job, committee, by the way.
Thank you.
Very good job.
There's no unfinished business. Is there any new business to come before the board?
Speaking of committees, you were to assign us to committees and quickly listed those to, or stated those to us at one of the board meetings. But could someone please send us an email about which committees we are assigned to?
That's a good suggestion and I, I accept responsibility that I gave the information to Diana late in the meeting and that's the only reason it wasn't in your packet. But we probably should do that, Diana.
Yeah, I'll send that to you guys.
Thank you.
We have any patron behavior issues to discuss?
I think since the last meeting, we have banned one person for a week. And so that week, I'm sure, is already over. But.
Was this a face mask issue?
Yep. Face mask issue, exactly. Just situations in which we've had to tell people repeatedly to keep a mask on their, up over their nose. So, and some people, you know, don't talk back, but then you walk away and they pull the mask right down. Some people like to put on a show and throw a big fit. It's just, you know, it's just what we have to deal with these days. So we try to keep the bans as short as possible and it depends somewhat on the whether or not their behavior becomes belligerent. So.
You know, it's fascinating to me that anybody can object to this. It's one thing to, I, they're not particularly comfortable. I understand that, but it just seems to me so silly that people get their back up. But that is America, I guess, so.
Diana, you mentioned having one social worker and you're looking for a second one?
Yeah, actually, I, I have a second one now. Interviewed her this week, so we will have two in place. And we also have to get a new social work instructor. They have to meet with it, with a, or supervisor. They have to meet with a MSW supervisor one hour per week. So we've used Connie Baker for the past couple of years, but she wants to retire. So we are now in search of a second person. So we have a second person in mind who I'm going to meet with this weekend, who will probably take it. We just kind of need to work out the terms of service. But she has done this before at another university and she came recommended by Paul Brinker, who works with us to find our social workers and works well with them from the social work department. So we, and she's a library patron. So hopefully she will say yes to that assignment and we'll have a supervisor to work with them one hour a week soon.
It'll probably be a couple of weeks yet before they're up and running?
Yes, it will be. It'll be more towards the end of the month. So they have to spend a couple of weeks getting acclimated and learning community resources and so forth, so.
I would suspect they'd be quite busy when they start.
They will be.
Speaking of being busy, I see you've got a lawyer volunteering his time. How is that working out?
That works out really well. It's, it's a grant through, I cannot remember the, the agency themselves, but they, their intent is to make, to help people to represent themselves. She's actually like part of the court system. And so she found the lawyer who would volunteer for this. And he seems to really like doing it. We're doing it via Zoom. Actually, Zoom works really, really well for this. Jennifer Robertson has been in charge of scheduling people who want to use it. And they get a 20-minute session. And it, it seems to work great. It's a lawyer and library program that's been done in a few different libraries. But it's, it's a pretty neat service to be able to offer to people. So if you want to volunteer, Don?
Well, I'm not running for office unlike the person that's volunteered. I have a question about this. Is there any other library in the area doing this?
Marion did it first.
Okay.
Yeah. They beat us to the punch.
I usually think you get what you pay for, but I, I welcome any free service to anyone, so that's good. Any other discussions about anything that we need to do before we adjourn the meeting? If not, thank you all for the meeting. We're adjourned.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.
Yeah, folks.